Start it here in just a moment. Be clear warning this time before I. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Middletown City Planning Commission to order for Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Benninger, if you could please call the roll.
Uh, Will Parsons?
Here.
A.J. Mendel?
Present.
Gabriel Sha- Shane Line?
Nancy Griffith?
Here.
Roger Daniel?
Here.
David Cash?
Here.
Tara Ramsey?
Here.
All right, uh, before we continue, we need a motion to excuse our absent member, uh, Shane Line.
I'll make a motion to excuse.
A second.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
Next, if you would, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is approval of the previous meeting minutes. Does anyone have anything that needs adjusted or any additions they would like to see?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Upstate.
And Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to our first public hearing of the evening. This is for a conditional use by the applicant at the property at six nine six two Coles Road. Uh, Ms. Benninger, if you could, uh, please review this case with us.
Uh, so this is for, um, a conditional use approval for an outdoor recreational facility, specifically an outdoor miniature golf course at six nine six two Coles Road. It's also known as Central Avenue. And the vacant parcel in the rear known as, uh, the parcel listed. Uh, this is Zone B two, Community Business District, where outdoor recreational recreation facilities are a conditional use that require review and approval by the City Planning Commission. For property background, the subject parcels are approximately two acres, um, with the rear vacant parcel equating just under one acre, according to staff measurements, because funny enough, the county auditor does not have, um, acreage listed for either parcel. This property was last sold in two thousand sixteen, according to the Warren County Auditor. And the last documented use of the property, according to city records, is an Assembly Hall and Conference Center approved in twenty of twenty-three. Um, so the purpose of that B two district is to provide for areas of the city that will contain a wide variety of commercial and office uses to meet the needs of the city and region that require access to major arterial streets and are in close proximity to major residential neighborhoods. So getting into staff analysis, staff finds the following as compared to the city's adopted plans and regulations. The proposed use, um, an outdoor recreational facility aligns with the purpose of the statement of the B two zoning district as miniature golf business, as the miniature golf business would be a commercial use for residents in the region, as well as being in close proximity to major residential neighborhoods. Um, I did go ahead and approve, include those use-specific standards, not approve, um, for your consideration. And then breaking down staff analysis for these, um, due to the subject parcels, the setbacks for the proposed use could not be adhered to as the northern portion of six nine six two Coles Road, the parcel listed, is only one hundred seventy-one feet wide and fifty-eight feet deep from the northern border of the building, so the back of the building essentially, to the lot line. And then that vacant parcel to the north of the building is approximately one hundred twelve feet wide with an approximate length of three hundred and fifty feet. And then according to the city's twen- two thousand eleven Street Master Plan, Coles Road is identified as a collector's street in that Street Master Plan map. Then getting into the buffer requirements, um, the proposed use shall be buffered with buffer type A when adjacent to any use in an R one, R two, or R three zoning district. An R two district is located to the west of the subject parcel. Parcels. Um, residential dwellings are located to the northwest and northeast of the subject parcels. However, they are outside the city's municipal boundary. It is safe to assume that the township would consider those residential. Um, a commercial building is located to the east of the subject parcels, but is also outside of the city's municipal boundaries. And whenever you are looking at, um, any use in the B two adjacent to any use in a B two, no buffering is required. And then before you is table twelve sixteen dash four, so that is where you can start to identify where buffering is needed when a new use is proposed. So as you can see here, the proposed use is any use in the B two zoning district. And when you're adjacent to any residential zoning district, you are, or R one, R two, or R three, you're required to do a buffer type A buffer. The applicant does propose to buffer as follows: a fifteen-foot width type A buffer to the north of the course, a fifteen-foot buffer with existing vegetation to the east that is adjacent to residential, a six-foot vinyl fence that is adjacent to commercial uses on the east side, a fifteen-foot type A buffer to the west that is adjacent to the backyard of the residential property. No buffer proposed along the remaining border, so here, from here to here, um, due to existing vegetation in the adjacent residential property. Lastly, the applicant proposes a fifteen-foot width type A buffer to the northwest, um, side right here. And I, I will. Southwest. And I will go back, so you guys are aware of what the fifteen-foot width type buffer is. It's going to be option two right here, so it will equate to two shade trees, uh, six evergreen trees, and fourteen small shrubs that will be repeated ever, every one hundred feet in length. Looking at parking, um, and let me pause really quick. When you guys see the application, there is mention of an indoor, the indoor use, we are only looking at outdoor use because that is the only part that is a conditional use. So the applicant breaks down his uses into phase one, which is that indoor golf course, and then the outdoors phase two. I did not include phase one parking as I deem that more tailored towards the indoor, uh, use, so we are only looking at phase two parking. So that will be to the east of the parcels, um, to the north of a gas station between that VFW and the gas station. So getting into our parking requirements, the applicant proposes to expand parking for the use by utilizing unused land directly east of the course. Uh, the proposed drive aisle, twenty-four feet of width for two-way traffic is in compliance with the standards set forth in table twelve eighteen dash two. The applicant proposes to create a total of twenty-four nineteen-foot by eighteen-foot ninety-degree angle parking spots. The parking stall width is in compliance with the standard set forth in table twelve eighteen dash two. The parking stall length is one foot shorter than the nineteen-foot, uh, parking stall length requirement, but that one foot, um, difference can be approved through an administrative waiver if requested by the applicant. Uh, then getting into the number of parking spaces required for this use, uh, looking at outdoor recreational facilities, um, the applicant did submit a section of the American Planning Association, so APA, um, Planning Adv- Ad- excuse me, Advisory Service, OPAS, um, that covers parking standards for an exhaustive list of uses. It's over two hundred pages, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, one hundred eighty-one. The one hundred eighty-one-page report published in two thousand and two. Um, and it surveys a variety of governments' parking standards for the wide list of its uses identified. The applicant does propose one point five parking spaces per hole in total, with parking phases one and two equating to sixty total parking spaces. With the proposed one point five parking spaces per hole, so thirty-three holes in total, times one point five parking spaces, equates to forty-nine point five parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to provide an exceedance of eleven parking spaces within phases one and two. Um, I bring this up as this is a valuable tool to use because in our Middletown Development Code, there is language that we are able to consult other resources should our Middletown Development Code not cover that. And actually, table twelve eighteen dash one points to chapter twelve eighteen point oh four, Part C, which does require us to look at other sources such as APA. Then getting into the future land use map, um, this property does fall within the single-family land use cat- category. You guys are pretty familiar with this future land use category at this point, so I will not read that to you. This is also within the University Northern Real Development Opportunity Area, which you guys have also heard quite frequently. This is really meant to be a neighborhood, um, with smaller commercial uses, should they be secondary uses. Then, then getting into other department comments, our city manager's office has stated the proposed use would be a complementary to the immediate location with close proximity to the existing bowling alley to create a small entertainment hub for residents and visitors of the city. And then, uh, Community and Economic Development Department has stated this is an exciting entertainment use for residents to visit. I have only received one public notice to, or one public comment to date. Um, the interested party was concerned about parking, but following explanation of the proposed reconfiguration of the parking lot in the front of the existing building, as well as the expansion of the parking to the east of the building, the interested party was less concerned. As for staff recommendation, based on the staff report provided, should the planning commission move to approve the sta- the application? Staff provides the following conditions to be included, should you so choose to include them. The fifteen-foot type A buffer be continued to the north of the patio area, southwest of the outdoor course. Applicant be in full compliance with the city's health department as it relates to ice cream service. The parking lot for phase two be in full compliance with twelve sixteen oh eight, Part E, landscaping requirements for vehicular use areas with the waiver of the requirement that the landscape islands be scattered throughout the parking area. The parking lot for phase two be in full compliance with twelve eighteen, um, oh three, Part H, Part Three, which is our grading, um, and surfacing requirements, and twelve eighteen oh four, Part G, Part Five, wheel stops and curbing. Lastly, the setback requirement within the use-specific standards for outdoor recreational facilities be reduced to fifteen feet from one hundred feet from all lot lines. Here is your conditional use review criteria. Additional criteria and conditions, time li- time limit and appeals process, and that will conclude my staff report.
Thank you. Do we have, uh, any questions that can be directed to staff at this time?
Could you go back to the, um, the staff recommendation? Yes, thank you. I just wanted to look over that just a little bit more. But, uh, no, I don't have any questions.
I, I do, I do. The, uh, so we're not even, we're not here on, uh, the applicant has proposed a reconfiguration of the front parking lot that we're not here for.
It is my understanding that it fits better with something that I can approve administratively or work out with the applicant as it better relates to that parking would be needed for immediate use for phase one, so the indoor portion.
Right.
Um, if council feels differently, then we can definitely redirect, but.
The, the, the eastern, the east parking lot, the east portion, parcel that's going to be used for parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of the parcel, or is that a separate parcel owned by, the same owner, but a separate parcel?
Yes, same owner, separate parcel. There's three parcels in total. They are listed in your staff packet. Um, the last parcel ends in oh eight.
The, uh, without that parking, would, would the, would the standards pres- on the Planning Advisory Service, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure, is that parking going to be necessary in order to operate the business in the back?
Yes.
Is? And I think counsel for the applicant is here, but, um, is there? So it's necessary that that parking remain with this conditional use, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But the deed, without any type of, or without there being some recordation of some restriction on that property being conveyed short of the other property, I mean, i- is this something that counsel's going to maybe, i- is, is there a condition we can, uh, add to the conditional use that would require the conditional, the continuation of the conditional use be conditioned upon that property remaining with the larger property with the, with the building on it? I know that was convoluted.
I think I can clear it up. The, the property owner that owns the gas station?
Mm-hmm.
Owns these two.
I, I understand that, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that one parcel can't be conveyed separate from the other parcel.
Sure.
That was my concern. I- i- if, if, if the parcel is separate where the east parking lot is, separate from the building parcel, without any type of restrictive covenant or, or restraint, that property could be conveyed with the parking lot away from the building.
I think before we get in too far down that rabbit hole, it's probably worth letting, if, if there's other questions for staff, having those vetted out and then hearing from the applicant.
Okay.
And then we can, we can revisit that.
Good enough. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay.
But just to reiterate what your point is, you're saying that, uh, proposing that the conditional use be granted as long as that, that parking lot parcel is bound with that. Is that what you're suggesting?
My concern is that they remain connected.
Okay.
The business, if the conditional use remains in, in effect. But we'll get into that with the applicants. Thank you.
Um, I had a question, just wanted to clarify, um, with part of the staff recommendation, if you could return to that slide again, please. I appreciate it. Um, I believe this is... Okay, so the first bullet, uh, this is referring to the area that currently does not have the fifteen-foot buffer proposed, but there is natural foliage, right?
Correct, um.
Is that, is, is currently as it, as it is, does that, that would not be in compliance then with the code?
Correct. Um, it is up to you guys, and you guys have the ability to add or waive, um, conditions such as that.
Sure.
Um.
Without it, though, technically is not within, is not, it would be non-conforming.
Because it is not on this, the subject property. It is somebody else's property.
Okay. Uh, second question I had was, uh, you'd mentioned with the, the parking that a waiver can be requested for the, uh, the one-foot difference there. I just wanted to be clear, i- is that something we've received a request for at this time, or were you just saying it could be requested?
Nothing has been included in the application at this time.
Okay.
Um, it is, I believe, probably up to your discretion if you want to include that in your condition to approve. Um, I didn't know if that was necessary, since I can include that in my, once I issue the zoning permit, should this be approved, so.
Okay. I think those are my only questions for now. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? No? Okay, uh, at this time, then, I'd like to move to opening the public hearing. Uh, before I do so, I'd like to remind anyone wishing to speak um, at the appropriate time, uh, to please come forward, be sworn in, and then identify yourselves for the record. Uh, so with that, I would like to open up the, uh, public hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this conditional use. Please come forward.
Sir, would you ra- would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God? And I, and identify yourself if you would, sir. Thank you.
Well, I'm the applicant. My name is Joe Dorsey. I'm from Northern Kentucky. Um, I went to U C. I was also a planning major, believe it or not, but I never used my degree. I guess tonight's the first time I'm actually using it. Honestly. Um, so I, I realize this is all, uh, emphasis is on the outdoor one, but I prepared the presentation because it's a package deal, honestly. They are interlocked, a- as far as my business plan. Can't have one without the other. It's like proposing a gas station without the convenience store, or vice versa, okay? Um, so, um, applying for approval for a mini golf facility, what's now the Crown Plaza Banquet Center on Coles Road, I'll be leasing the site from the owner, who is, is, is your staff member mentioned, uh, is the owner of the gas station next door. He owns everything, okay, uh, that I'll be leasing from him. It'll be on a twenty-eight-year lease. Uh, but of course, uh, the lease is all contingent on getting zoning approval and what happens tonight, okay? I have three months to do my due diligence. I'm in about week three. So to begin with, uh, if you, uh, I'm sorry, here? Oh, it worked, great. Okay, so I, I just put this slide together. Let's call it like, uh, the master plan. For the project, there's five elements, uh, called out. We won't be doing this at all at one time. It's just too much for two people to manage at once, okay? So we'll be concentrating on what we can do, given the weather, uh, building the indoor putt-putt course, uh, reconfiguring the main parking lot and, uh, redoing it. And then, uh, that will begin as soon as we can, like in October, we're hoping for, we're targeting. And then next late spring, maybe early summer, uh, we'll begin construction of the outdoor course, assuming we get approval from the, um, planning council, the planning commission. Okay? As, as your staff member mentioned, I'll just recap, to the east are the, uh, gas station at the corner of Dixie Highway and Coles Road. Uh, above that, uh, is the VFW post, and I will also point out there is a very large, uh, cell phone tower there. Also, I think that the F W, uh, post leases that out to Verizon or some cell phone tower company. Beyond that are the two homes on Dixie Highway, very nice homes, and then to the west are two more homes. Below me, um, is the, uh, bowling alley, uh, Eastern Bowl. And then, there's actually two, I'll also point out, there's actually two vacant buildings at that same corner, that same intersection, that are now on sale, okay? Oh, go ahead. So this is the, uh, just the overview of the area. We saw area before, pointing out the, the surrounding conditions, some photos of the building. You're probably familiar with the front of the building, the side of the building, uh, but not so much the back. It's not very pretty back there, honestly. It's sort of like compacted gravel, um, but that is the back of the building, okay? Um, so the first thing you'll see happening on the outside, uh, if you give approval, is, uh, the building being painted and spruced up. Uh, it's not particularly an eyesore. Uh, they actually do, they take pride in their property. They keep it up. They maintain it. But it kind of looks like a contractor's warehouse. Uh, I, I wasn't sure when I saw it, what to make of it, but, um, we thought painting it, uh, a, a nice clean, sort of mid-tone green to tie in with the mini golf theme, sprucing up the outside canopy somehow, which is now just sort of a tired brown shingles. This is just a conceptual branding, to give you an example, okay? Not necessarily putting that forth as exact colors or, uh, improvements. Secondly, uh, the existing parking lot in the front, it's functional, uh, but it has some serious shortcomings. Uh, among other things, the drive aisles are only about seventeen and a half feet wide. That is narrow. And they just dead-end, as you can see on the left, uh, and moreover, people have to navigate their way between parked cars to get to the front entrance, and that's not a really an ideal situation when you have young kids, which I will be, have a lot of them, hopefully. Secondly, it's, you know, it's just a barren expanse. It's a very nineteen seventies, eighties parking lot, so, um, we came up with the reconfigured plan you see on the right, uh, to improve the flow, bring it up to, uh, engineering standards besides the, uh, planning and zoning code, and also, uh, we want to add landscaping. Circulation, I'll just point out, is one-way clockwise, so we're going to move the entrance farther away from the major intersection. I've noticed when I've driven there, I'm always looking at my back mirror to make sure the car behind me is slowing down. I got my blinker on. So I think moving it down was a good idea. Uh, in a case, um, you know, for some reason, you feel like you have to go round again, you're just going to take a right. You're not going to be crossing traffic coming from, uh, Middletown proper, uh, down Coles Road. Um, I'll point out that is, like I said, one-way, which is safer than two-way. Uh, we'll have twenty-two-foot wide aisles. We also noticed, it was kind of fortuitous in a way. We didn't have enough room to put in a fifth row of parking, uh, so we came up with, I think, as little out of the fi- out of the box, instead of having that middle traditional, you know, fender-to-fender or grill-to-grill, uh, of the two parking columns facing each other. We had some extra footage. Let's split them apart, give a, a nice, safe walking aisle or pedestrian path, I'm not sure what you call it, coming right out of the, uh, e- exit or the entrance, uh, for moms and dads with little kids to get to their car, uh, with less stress, you know, and, and safe, more safer. And then especially, I think what's really noticeable is they're going to be adding a lot of landscaping. It's, it's, it's going to look really nice, I think, when we get done with it, really nice. People driving down Coles Road are going to go, wow, they, they did a great job with that. It's going to look, uh, really pretty, I think. Uh, at the same time, while this is going on the outside, we'll be building a sixteen-hole mini golf course on the inside. Uh, when I wrap this up, I'll just show you a few quick pictures of an example of the type of mini golf that will be, try to emulate down in Lexington, Kentucky. Okay? All right. Uh, the other planned feature, uh, is, was mentioned, is that we'll be selling refreshments with the emphasis, um, the main offering being uh, traditional hand-scooped ice cream, so just be like what you'd expect to find when you walk into a Grater's or a U D F. Sugar cones, shakes, blizzards, um, things like that, okay? But of course, if you're going to be offering ice cream, uh, you want to have a place for people to enjoy it, uh, enjoy the weather. Uh, mini golf is especially, uh, you know, oriented towards the summer. So tying in with the ice cream, uh, the third element of the master plan is to build a, uh, or to develop a, uh, outdoor seating area at the, uh, back of the building. Uh, there is an, uh, exit there, door there, uh, right now in the back left-hand corner, the northwest corner of the building. Uh, the architectural details aren't decided yet. Um, you know, are we going to have paver or concrete or artificial turf or natural grass for the, the, uh, material, but, um, I think you can imagine. It's going to be your typical, you know, patio tables, uh, chairs, umbrellas, market umbrellas, just to, you know, provide a nice place for people to get out the sun, sit down with their kids, add up their scores, you know, talk, enjoy a nice ice cream, uh, with, with their family. Make a, just, we just want to make a nice quiet, uh, a nice spot for families to enjoy, so. Now, as you can, as you know, uh, i- i- we are up against the back end of the neighbor's yard, uh, of the house up on Coles. Now, as you know, we are up against the back end of the neighbor's yard of the house up on Coles Road. The slides, the bottom left-hand picture, actually, you can kind of see it in the distance there, the home. So to mitigate any possible impact, we're proposing putting in a six-foot vinyl fence coming off the corner of the building over to the proposed Type A buffer, which, as Claire mentioned, is the 15-foot Type A buffer, okay? So that would block any kind of direct visual line of sight from that home, or even their backyard, so to speak. So that's the idea behind that. And actually, there's sort of a third natural sort of mitigation measure in that this is the lowest spot around. There's, you can kind of tell from that lower left-hand photo that that house is about four feet up in elevation. So if people are seeing stuff, it's going to be like a sunken perspective, right? They're going to be sunk down in relationship to the neighbor's house, okay? This is the parking lot on the east side. I can answer your question, I had the same concern about this, making sure, I don't lose that. I cannot function without this parking lot. I would not go through it if they did not agree to this. This is the back unused portion of the gas station, right? Okay, it's, I think VFW people use it, I suspect, on Friday nights, whatever. And they do use it for overflow parking now for the banquet center, okay? It is part of the lease that I had the right to use that parking lot, so that's, I have. And I can show that to you, we can tighten up, and I actually put it in because I kind of expected this, that whatever the commission requires, you will agree to, basically, is what the lease says, okay? So I hope that answers your concerns, okay? So then, after we get the, you know, the indoor going, the plan is late spring, early summer, to construct the outdoor golf course on the vacant lot to the north. I put together these photos because I figured you weren't as familiar with the field. Did anyone walk back there or anything? Okay, so I'm glad I put these together so you can kind of see, get familiar with it. I'm sure you're familiar with the banquet center building, but just to kind of explain, got a laser pointer here, point it out, yeah, that works. So, yeah, these are all the west property line. When I took this photo, I was standing in the gravel, right, the building is behind me. This is the lower stretch where I had not planned on putting a buffer, and you can see what I was referring to with the heavy overgrowth. This is a close-up. If you look at the aerial in particular, you can kind of, this is fuzzy because it's all blown up, but you can see this, it's very, very mottled here versus these nice yards and the grass and things like that. It's very heavy undergrowth vegetation and things like that, full-growth trees. I don't know, I don't think anyone's been back there probably in years. It's certainly not actively used backyard by any means. And that kind of starts right where their barn is. It's like a shed or something, it's all very heavy growth back there. So that was why I didn't, you know, think about putting a buffer. I'll just say right now, I'm fine with it. I have no problems with it, nothing's written in stone here. Again, looking at the same southwest corner of the building, and that's that heavy vegetation, but it is on their property, so I understand it's supposed to be on my property, so I'll do that. And this is where the, it turns the corner right here and goes over to the Coles Road House, the backyard, the rear of the backyard of the Coles Road House. That's where it turns the corner, right there. Over on the right is the, looking towards Dixie Highway to the north, you can just kind of make out the cellphone tower facility, and you can see how heavy that vegetation is. As your staff member mentioned, I am asking that we allow, be allowed to continue to use that as the buffer. It is on my property, the majority of it, 20, somewhere 20, 25 feet deep. It gets even deeper as you go up, up here, but that's really not pertinent, but anyway. And that's a close-up of the eastern property line there. As far as like maybe a concern about, I don't know, some drunk, you know, some teenage kid intruding on the lots or on the houses, you do have this chain link fence all along the path on the eastern side. And behind this tree, I'll point it out, you can't see it in the aerial, but where that concrete barrier is and that sort of scar, all along here, along, is a pretty nasty drainage ditch. I've got some, one photo I can show you later on. It's pretty, it's like a moat. I don't think, I think, you know, it's going to really discourage any kid, just being a smart aleck and going over to the neighbor's yard, okay? Because I thought about that, you know? But after I saw that, it's like, I don't think anyone's going to want to venture down there. The center photo is looking straight down towards the back of the building, from about halfway up. And what I'm, want to show here is, I'm just highlighting the proposed area of development for the vacant one-acre lot. As you can see, I'm not even using half of it. The whole entire northern half behind these nice homes, or this home on, I guess, the corner of Dixie and Tidelawn, and where their home is, I'm not going to touch. Going to leave it in its natural state. I don't think they're really going to notice a difference when they pull into their driveway, okay? And this is really thick, pretty thick vegetation up here, you can see it really goes out. So what I'm, just to give you some idea, this is about a football field long, if you include the end zones, and about two-thirds of a football field wide, okay? So think of it as a skinny football field, basically, all right? Now, what I'm left with is about 17,500 square feet to build on, okay? And I bring that up to point out that that is small for a mini, outdoor mini golf course, okay? In comparison, I don't know if you guys been to any recently, but the nearest ones are the one in Fairfield, the Family Fun Center at, you know, on Route Four and Dixie Highway. They have two there, those are built on 46,000 square feet, so the average is 23,000, and I'm building about 17,500. The next nearest one is the one up in Centerville, it's called the Magic Castle. That's 32,000 square feet double, and it's just one course. So the 17,500, I'm not overdoing it, in fact, this would be considered a small course. But its quality, not quantity, if you ask me, okay? I'm not worried about it, but pushing it down more, it's going to be pushing the limits, honestly, of what's to build a decent, enjoyable course for the families, okay? So just, Claire covered this, but just to go a little bit more detail about the buffers, again, 15-foot type buffer A along here, and I just picked this out because this is where, I stopped it here because it's just an extension of the property line, basically, okay? So it's 100 feet down, and it would just be a reflection of an extension of the property line here. And that's about where we're meeting, here, with this close-up, you can see how mottled that is with all the heavy weeds and things like that, okay? And then over on the right, we would, I'm asking if we could, if you could recognize that as a sufficient buffer to fulfill the requirements, and your ordinance does specifically allow that to be recognized as such. Anything I would put in is not going to even come close to how effective this existing vegetation is. And then we would connect the two with an additional Type A 15-foot buffer. So we're, you know, we're enclosing this putt-putt, we're cutting it off from visual, from line of sight as best I can, okay? I have no problems if you want to extend this down. I just thought it was a waste of money, to be honest with you. I didn't think it was necessary, but it's not going to cost me a ton, and it will, I would probably be building vegetation there anyway. I just planned on flower beds and things like that, and I'll, you'll see why when I go to the next slide, so. At this too, is also, you got a drop in elevation down to here. I looked at the Warren County GIS topo map, I don't, I don't believe it, but according to them, from the house down to about here is a four-foot drop. It certainly doesn't seem like that. When you get down here, it's a six-foot drop, and down here it's an eight-foot. It doesn't seem like that, but I'm just reading the topo lines. But you are getting, you know, you're sinking down visually, okay? The fencing here, here, and here is for my benefit, it's just ugly. You've got this cell tower with barbed wire, you've got this ugly drainage ditch, and this is going to be remaining for emergency vehicles and for turnaround, okay? If someone wants to turn around deliveries, the garbage dumpster will be moved from here to, you know, to somewhere over here, okay? And we don't need to develop this, this is sufficient, okay? I had them, I met with the fire marshal to see if that's okay. I was concerned, he might say, well, look, you know, we've got to get around to this corner. He didn't seem to be concerned about it. I guess they'll just, if they have to, they'll just push it down, I guess, you know? But you can get on three of the sides of the building, so we were out there last Thursday. This is the, where the, no, it's below this, I beg your pardon, it's below the VFW. So it'd be around here is where that additional parking would be, okay? The reason I was doing 18-foot, it's a little bit narrow. It works, but every, you know, I will be applying for administrative checkoff to do 18-foot because it's a little bit tight, so that's why I was doing 18-foot. But it would be the 24-foot aisle, drive aisle, okay? Then as far as the course itself, just to give you an idea, these are, these are pictures of two courses. They're close to home, they're not down in Florida in Sarasota or where there's year-round beautiful weather. This is, these are two are just up in Columbus, Ohio, and they are probably the most nicely-done, attractive mini golfs me and my son have ever played, right here in our backyard, for all practical purposes. These are up in, one is the Westerville Golf Center to the northeast suburb of Columbus, and the other one is Olentangy Mini Golf, also to the northwest suburb of Columbus, Ohio. We were really taken with these. In fact, I took lots of photos and met with landscape architect. When he asked me, what do you want, I just showed him the photos, give me this, this is what I want. We call it the concept, and I'll be explaining, you know, people understand quick ideas. So I'm talking to landscapers, we want to build a putt-putt in a park, that's what we call it. That's our design theme or philosophy, a putt-putt in a park with, you know, formal flower beds, trees. We want to create shade as much as possible. They spend about 35,000 a year on refreshing these flower beds, I've been told. The reason I know that is we became good frie, I don't want to say good friends, but they were very kind to me, the owner of the Olentangy and the Westerville Golf Center especially, and they gave me a lot of good advice, okay? And then just lastly, this is a Malibu Jackstown Lexington, this is our model that we'll try to emulate. I just want to make the point that we're, this is not going to be one of those dark neon glow-in-the-dark-type mini golfs that you find at Scene 75, you know, sort of thing. We're going to try to make it an outdoor course. The indoor course is as much as we can to look like an outdoor course. Now, this is an old, big old soccer indoor field, and this is a former Lowe's down in Lexington, so. The banquet center's not as large as these, but this is what we're going to try to do, okay? Keep it light and bright, we want people to come in January and February, March and feel refreshed, you know? Get out of the jury Cincinnati winters, you know, those dark days. So that's what we're going to be striving to do. As far as the business, I mentioned my son just briefly, this will be family-run and operated. Either he or I will be on-site, probably both of us practically every day. We are a startup, but I guess most people say, we've been dreaming about this. Well, we've been doing a lot more than dreaming, we've been actively researching, planning, frankly, about this for several years now. We've visited at least 70-plus courses all throughout the Midwest, Florida, South Carolina, Gatlinburg, and we just didn't play golf. We were there taking photos, using my laser measure to take measurements, anytime, taking notes like, oh, we saw, oh, like one place in Gatlinburg, they had misters, never even thought about that. Put misters on the course, it was great. And then we would go home, look at the aerial photo, if we saw a hole that was really fun, well-designed, we'd look at the aerial photo, and we'd look at our measurements, and we, we're just going to copy it, you know? So we have all our holes designed, we're ready to plop them in at this point and arrange them to fit, to fit the outline, okay? And like I mentioned, the owners, and one more actually out in St. Louis, they've become informal mentors, so they've shared a lot of information, very concrete information about marketing coupons, when to expect it to get busy, how many people you're going to need at any given day and things like that. So, you know, we're a startup, but, we're dreamers, but we're very serious about this. And our dream now is to stop dreaming and turn it into reality with your blessing, okay? So that's, I asked you to approve the application. One thing I didn't point out is because it's cut off on the area, you do have the bowling alley, and I really appreciated the comment by, I guess it was the community development director, that with the bowling alley across the street, there's potential, and you've got those two empty buildings, right? There is potential, it's become a little, nice little mini entertainment center for the Middletown families. That one, there's that, I don't know what used to be there, that big brown building, I call it. I can easily see like one of those trampoline places going in there, or one of those indoor recreation, playtime parks, something like that. I can easily imagine that, I guess it was an old car care place across from the gas station, it's like a black building. Somebody smart, they would put in like a, like a Jimmy John's, that'd be perfect, you know? So empty buildings are not good for any city, you know? So, but if they see activity, they see people coming, they see bowling alley, they see busy golf, mini golf facility, it could spark that intersection being uplifted, I hope. And I was, used to be a real estate agent years ago, I'll call those agents and let them know, hey, this is happening, use it in your marketing and mention it to people, okay? That's all I have. I'll turn it back over to whoever I should turn it back over to.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Yes, so first I just wanted to say, thank you, very well-thought-out plan. But one thing that, that was like kind of like at the back of my mind this whole time is that unused area in the back. I know you said that you were like, what is your management plan for that unused? Are you just going to let it go and grow?
Oh, that is my responsibility, or the lease, to cut the grass, basically. It's, I'm just going to get the name of the grass cutter from the owner right now and say, hey, send the bill to me. So we're just going to, whatever's been done today, we'll just have it cut.
So, speaking as not a board member, but as like a citizen of town, I implore you, look into native meadowscaping for that area.
Sure, I know what you mean.
I think it'll help improve the beauty, and bring the whole thing together, and it'll be sustainable.
Cone flowers, things like that, native Ohio plants. I totally understand what you're referring to, yeah.
Thank you. That's really the only big question I had on that.
That was, that's a good idea, never occurred to me, actually, pretty it up, you know, tie it in with the whole putt-putt in the park idea, you know? Instead of just meadow clover.
Lighting plan, hours of operation, how that might affect the neighbors?
Yeah, good question. So my son and I, we have played mini golf courses at night, okay? We don't like it because there's too many shadows with these overhead 15-foot poles, 20-foot poles. So we nixed that idea early on, so what we planned on to, again, fit in with the whole garden idea is landscape lighting, and most probably solar lighting, actually. It's cheaper and it works, and, you know, it's the outdoor, so it gets plenty of sun back there. So we intended to, to answer your question directly, we intend to do low-level, you know, the two-foot pathway lighting, okay? Okay?
I thi-, I think you also asked, um, hours of operation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Uh, yeah, so seasonal, uh, probably about from April one till about the, sometime in mid or end of October. Uh, in non-school days, from that, like, April to mid-May, uh, till about eight o'clock. Twilight is the, the rule of thumb, okay? Um, and then when we're busy in the summer, when school is out, open till ten PM, um, most probably I'm gonna have, you know, teenagers being my part-time help. I don't want them out at, I don't want them there alone after ten o'clock, honestly. There's, and there's, we're family-oriented. I don't wanna be attracting drunk bowlers, basically, okay? To be honest with you, okay? And I don't want kids there after ten by themselves, and I don't wanna stay up till ten on a Saturday night, okay? Um, and then on Sundays, we'll have more limited hours. Uh, it's traditionally, almost everywhere else. I've looked, I, that was part of my canvassing. I looked at all the other places in Cincinnati, where their hours, almost all of them on Sundays open eleven, and they close like at eight or so. So they close early on Sundays. Um, and then, um, but we will be open seven days a week, but those limited hours, okay?
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, too.
All right. If there is anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Having no response, we will continue on with the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Identify yourself if you would.
I'm Victoria Copley. I'm the owner of one of the houses on the, the house on the corner of Talton and Coles Road. My grandfather built that house back in the middle of the nineteen-fifties. Um, my mother lives in it today. We work, most of the things we are concerned about were addressed in the PowerPoint, but I was very confused about the discrepancy between the paper that was sent to me, the, um, unusable plot, which is the, the area behind my house. He was only gonna use, the PowerPoint he showed only used, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint showed him going halfway down to the, the vacant lot, and I was wondering, are you, is he holding that extra lot in case he wants to do something else later? Is that always an option? Um, obviously, we, we don't want it. We don't wanna sit back here and listen to the cars and the kids and the lights, and, you know, I appreciate low lighting, but it's still our family home, and we would like it to remain as such. Um, the other concern was the drainage ditch. Yeah, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. The owners do not maintain it. Um, we've contacted them when their trees are falling in our yard. We've contacted them numerous times over the past five years, and absolutely no response. So I'm concerned about what they're going to do at the south end of the drainage ditch, because I certainly don't want that coming back over into my yard. He, he's talking about a slope down towards Coles Road, but it also slopes a little bit towards Dixie. And the last thing I want is all of that drainage back in the yard that her great-grandchildren play in. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward at this time. All right. Having no response, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to deliberation. Um, I'd like to ask staff, would it be appropriate, is it okay if we, uh, I'd like to address one of the questions from the, uh, the, the previous, um, resident back to the, the applicant, if that's all right?
Yeah, you just reopen the public hearing to the applicant, to allow the applicant to come speak.
Sure. I'd like to do so, please.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, one of the points that was, uh, was raised, that, uh, if we could get some of your, um, clarification on, is any future plans for that unused portion? I know you mentioned, um, uh, it's not gonna be fully used. Uh, you had mentioned mowing. Um, uh, we had a suggestion, um, from Mr. Mintel as well. Is there, uh, potential plans of future expansion back there, or what, what are the current thoughts on that?
Right. So, I think your confusion was from this, the document that went out, right? I think that was, Claire, was that, you have a copy of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it. It's, I kinda saw it too. I saw it too. It's like, what? I think they're just highlighting the acreage.
Yeah.
That's all. They're not showing my, my proposal.
Yeah, I understood that, but I'm, I'm still concerned, because that's my backyard. I mean, you know, I, I know it's not my property, but.
Right, yeah.
That, that's up to our yard.
No, I, I understand too. I've been, I'm in your, you know, with you.
Okay.
So, no, no plans. Uh, we can't. We don't have enough parking. We've got to stop, you know? We can't do anything. Uh, the ditch, I don't like it either, but I can't make the owner do anything. And honestly, that's Butler County's responsibility, is it not? 'Cause all that water, I've been told by the real estate agent, comes down off of Tatlon or Tal-, uh, Talton, Tal-, Talton, uh, comes off of Talton, and the real estate agent's been pushing the owner to contact Butler County engineers to look into this. He shouldn't have to take care of this problem. Um, it's.
Yeah, it'd be worrying.
Oh, is it wor-, oh, yeah, you are worrying. Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, you're real, right at the, at the, right on the prop-, right on the border. Um, so, yeah, I would like to have something done about it, too, 'cause I don't like it.
But I don't know what that is. Do you?
I don't know. What would you like to see? Is it, is it aesthetics, or is it?
I don't want it in my yard. I don't want the water overflowing into my yard.
Has it in the past?
No, because there's vegetation there.
Yeah, right.
But if you're concreting, if you're blocking or something, if you're on the other side and make it parking or additional holes, that's nowhere for the water to go.
Yeah, we won't be, so that won't occur, 'cause we won't, we can't build on it, 'cause we don't have enough parking.
All right. I would also, I, I apologize. If I could ask, uh, staff real quick, is the, is the current discussion, is that anything that is part of our deliberation right now, or is that sort of separate?
It, it should really be your addressing the.
Please.
Commission here and on, on, yeah, on commission's questions, so.
I do, uh, I would like to say on behalf of the commission, I, I appreciate the, uh, having the resident present to, to give their, um, their concerns, and I would encourage our, our applicant to continue the dialogue, um, after this meeting, and I would encourage the, the resident as well as anyone else, uh, in the area who may have some of those concerns. Seems you're very ready and willing to, to work with, with, with those individuals, so I would encourage you to do so after.
Yeah. I won't be building, if I may, if you don't mind, just to set up, uh, no plans to build, so there won't be concrete pour, no parking lot back there. Nothing's gonna change. It'll be a continuation of existing conditions. And also, I do wanna mention, um, we will not be pill, building, uh, our putt-putt on concrete. Uh, we're gonna build like semi-pro, um, greens. That is the trend today. You build on gravel, and then on a half-inch polyurethane pad, and then you put your turf over that. The turf has perforations, the pad has perforations, and the gravel drains. So, um, and I built this, I built it, uh, one myself to test it out, and it's worked. I've had it like almost two years now. That's how long we've been at this. It's held up great, and it drains well. So, um, even down south, it should drain right into the ground, or majority of it should. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, that will, uh, re-close public hearing then.
All right, this time I would, uh, ask for further deliberation from the commission. I think, uh, Claire, could you go to the, um, the staff, thank you, staff recommendations? I, I was reading conditions, and I couldn't get the word out. Um, so how do we feel about continuing this Type A buffer as a condition?
Uh, to be clear again, 'cause it, it did seem like there were kind of two spots, so I just wanna make sure I'm getting this right. We have the spot where there was some of the existing, um, vegetation. If you're just looking at this map, we're looking at the left side there. Um, there also was talks, we're talking in this top-right corner, uh, there is, uh, if you could go, yeah, up to the top-right, this is where there is existing vegetation, and so are we to understand that this is sufficient to meet buffering?
You are able to use existing vegetation for a buffer.
Okay, okay. So then, uh, our, just to fully reiterate, we were talking about this bottom-left corner, as it were.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, I mean, especially hearing from the applicant that he isn't opposed to that, I, I would be in favor of keeping that as part of the condition. Uh, can we go back to that conditional, uh, the, um, sorry, the, the recommendation page, please?
So, my thoughts on this was that, uh, the applicant is, wanted to do other types of landscaping with that space. So, as I understand it, that space will be landscaped regardless of whether or not we require it, but, so do we want to pretty much require the applicant to do, to plant, what is it, two shade trees, six evergreen trees, and fourteen small shrubs in that space, or let them landscape it as they see fits the course?
I would be in favor of keeping it with, uh, to the code, just on the off-chance. We have it where currently, and if it's been that way for a while, all likelihood it wouldn't change. That being said, the fact that it's not on, uh, their property, anything could happen, that could change, and rather than having to then deal with that later on, I think it'd be per, it'd be wise to just go ahead and have that.
I can agree with that. Um, and then.
That would just be my opinion, though.
Um, I think we should definitely attach being in full compliance with the health department as it relates to the ice cream service. Um, I don't think anybody would be opposed to that. Um.
I mean, I thought the, uh, the parking area especially compared to what is currently there, um, seemed really smart. I appreciated the thought that went into the one-way, as well as even the placement of the entrance versus exit. I know, um, I, I frequent that, that area a lot, and it can be a little scary, turning left off of, um, Dixie if, when there's someone turning right there. Sometimes that can be a little close, so that did seem wise. Um, having, uh, the, uh, the middle lane for pedestrians, um, I appreciated the safety measure there. So, and it, with it currently being, I believe it was listed as seventeen-foot wide, um, even though we're still a little less than the nineteen, going up to eighteen is still a, a very solid improvement there. So, I think I, yeah.
And then Claire, just to, just to clarify, this, um, this twelve-sixteen-oh-eight-e waiver is a waiver of not, like, not requiring landscaped islands to be within that second phase, right?
Uh, yeah. So when I was looking at the plan, um, and I don't know the least how that works out with, um, the applicant, but just looking at it, separating parking spaces by islands, when it's, I think there's only twelve on the north and twelve on the south, it seemed a little silly to me, um, when it comes to, this is a needed addition, and then going further into that unused parcel, um, did not feel needed. Uh, so that is why that is included, um, for that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding everything.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have anything else to add, or?
I, I, I would say for me personally, I, um, would, would be in favor of approving a conditional use based on the, uh, the recommendation given by, uh, by staff.
So, to clarify, you want to move to approve with all of the, um, conditions listed here? Okay. Um, well, then I will second that, and I will cite criteria one, two, six, and eight.
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
Once again, uh, would encourage, uh, the applicant to continue that dialogue with the, uh, the other, um, kind of stakeholders, residents of that area, but I do applaud you for your, your thoroughness. Um, and just as a, a resident, I, I've heard since, since I've gone to, to school here as a kid, people a lot of times complain of not having, um, enough recreation opportunities. Um, and so, uh, seeing all of the, the research, the places you went, I appreciate that, after all that, you were looking to, to build here, so I wish you well with your endeavor. Moving forward, we have another public hearing for a conditional use. Uh, this is for, uh, the property at three-two-four-oh Yankee Road. Uh, Ms. Benninger, if you could please review the case with us.
Uh, yeah, I will start off by, uh, letting you guys know, the applicant did ask to withdraw the, their application. However, after understanding that, because it's been publicly noticed, you guys would have to accept a formal withdrawal request. I did not receive such. Um, so we are going to move forward unless, uh, Charles says otherwise. Uh, so this is for conditional use approval to allow for a used car dealership at thirty-two-forty Yankee Road. The property is Zone B two, same zoning district as the previous case, where a lot's smaller than four acres in size, and lot frontage smaller than two-hundred feet, uh, to be used as automotive sales and leasing, or a conditional use that requires review and approval by the City Planning Commission. So, if you guys remember this property from back in April, uh, this is just under a half-acre, according to Butler County Auditor, last sold in twenty-twenty-one, with the total street frontage facing Yankee Road and Oxford State Road of approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three feet. Uh, the last documented use of this property, according to the city's records, was automotive sales and leasing approved in twenty-twenty-one, and the last application for the subject property was a conditional use application for a used car lot denied by the Planning Commission on April ninth of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, getting into the proposed use as it relates to the city's stated purpose for that zoning district, um, I forgot to change that from outdoor recreational facility to automotive sales and leasing, so excuse my typo, uh, but this does align with the purpose statement of the B two community, just, community business district, as automotive sales and leasing would, um, be a commercial use for residents as well as those in the region. Um, you can see the use-specific standards on the screen. Then getting into how it compares, the proposed use compares to those use-specific standards. Uh, the subject parcel, just as I stated, is under a half-acre in size with a total street frontage of approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three feet. The subject parcel is not adjacent to a residential zoning district, and there is a permanent structure located on the property. According to the city's twenty-eleven street master plan, both Oxford State Road and Yankee Road are identified as minor arterial streets in the street master plan map, um, since it's a corner lot fronted by both of those roads. And the applicant has not submitted any screening plans for review of compliance with Chapter twelve-sixteen-oh-six, or the applicant's state of Ohio dealer's license. Um, because the application also included the reference of light mechanical work, I did include the use-specific standards for, um, automotive service station. There's a lot. I did not go into detail, um, as to how the application compares to, um, those use-specific standards, since I don't know what is really proposed, um, for that light mechanical work. Um, getting into the comprehensive plan, this property in question is located in the industrial land use, which is defined as primarily a mix of light-heavy and high-tech industrial uses with secondary uses that include office warehousing and storage. Um, and there was a typo in your staff packet. This is actually in the city's, uh, mid-city's development opportunity area, uh, which includes a variety of smaller future land-use areas. Um, this includes the mid-city's industrial park. While vacant lots are available, redevelopment of three adjacent brownfields will stabilize the area for a new generation of industrial users. Adjacent neighborhoods will be protected from industrial encroachment by landscaping and buffering. And the future land use identified for that development opportunity area is an area made up of a mixture of future land uses, including industrial, mixed residential, single-family residential, neighborhood-mixed use, and open space. And I'll stop there, since the rest is not totally relevant. As for other department comments, the Community Economic Development Department has stated the size of the site is not conducive to the pur- the size of the site is not conducive to the proposed use and no public comments have been received to date. As for staff recommendation, based on the staff report provided, should the Planning Commission move to approve the application, staff recommends the following conditions be included. A five-foot type A buffer be established on the western border of the parcel to buffer between the proposed use and the existing residential dwelling. Applicants submit the dealer's license to the city 30 days after issuance prior to the use commencing. Major repair work as defined by the Middletown Development Code is prohibited. Any light and mechanical work occur only within the building. Mechanical work occurring outdoors is, should be prohibited. And I forgot to include this condition. This is already part of the conditional use approval so that any conditional use that is not adhering to the terms of the condition, the hold the public hearing to determine what should be decided. Here's your review criteria. Additional criteria and conditions, time limit and appeals process. The applicant is not present and that will conclude my staff report.
Thank you very much. Before we move to public hearing, do we have any questions that can be directed to staff at this time? All right. I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Having no response, if anyone wishes to speak in opposition, please come forward. Having no response, I will close the public hearing and we'll move to deliberation. For me, we had a very similar application put in, in very recent memory. I would say my feelings on the matter have not changed. I still don't think it is the right move. I personally would not approve this.
So I was not at the April meeting, but I did read over the meeting notes just to make sure that I understood everything that happened. And I have to agree with Mr. Parsons. As he said, I'm paraphrasing, but we need to have bigger aspirations as a, as a city and we must implement or approve what is guided by the master plan. This does not really line up with that. Seems like the applicant's, as Ms. Binniger said, requested the, this to be withdrawn anyway, so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
To deny?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Cash?
Yes.
And Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, to deny.
All right. That brings us to order new business. Does anyone have anything that needs to be brought before the commission? All right, very good. In which case, the next meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make one.
Are you sick?
Easy enough. I'm, I'm over it. I was last week.